It's like a scam.
Where's Anita?
Yeah, that's, I was expecting her, but I don't see her.
Me too.
Oh, here we go. All right. All right, call in to order the August 7th, 2024 meeting of the Long Lake City Council at 6:30 PM. All council members are present this evening with the exception of Councilmember Joyce. We, let's do item two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is Mayor's Comments, Long Lake News Meeting Reviews and Updates. So since we had our last council meeting, a few things to report on. On Saturday, the 27th, was the Long Lake Fire Department Red Hot Run 5K. So it was a great, great weather along the hot side, I would say. And I shouldn't say great, it was a little too hot. But a great event, good turnout from the community for that. Councilmember Qualley and I ran side by side the whole time and I said, "Go ahead with Tommy, go ahead with Tommy." But she, she stuck with, she stuck back with me, so, no, that was a great event and fun.
I had fun running with you, Charlie.
Oh, good, yes, yeah, agreed, agreed.
A little hot, but...
And we'll get the rest of the council members on board for next year. We should all go out, we have to form notice, we should go out running every, every morning or something. So that was a great event, thank you for Long Lake Fire Department for putting that on. I know there's a lot of work that goes into notifying the neighbors of, of traffic, road closures and things like that, but, great event. And then last night was the Night to Unite. So, we had five different neighborhood events in Long Lake. Kudos to Long Lake Fire Department and Wayzata Police for all the planning they put into that, as well as city staff. I was participating, Councilmember Feldman was here, and Councilmember Dibbick was participating as well for much of the evening. We had Orchard Circle, the new Zavago Complex, Linda Wood Lane, Bullum Circle, and Apple Gun Road. So I think maybe we lost a venue or two and gained a venue or two this year, so fun to, a little variety there. But need to go inside Zavago, really neat, unique community in there with all the residents living there that seemed very happy to be living in Long Lake, and they became really good friends over the last year or so, and love visiting our restaurants and things like that, so fun to see, and they love the Fire Department because they came there already to give some CPR class, and now they're looking at partnering for an AED potentially in the facility. So a great turnout last night for that. And then we received a letter from League of Minnesota Cities that was dated July 26th, notifying us that Representative Andrew Myers has been selected as, as a legislator of distinction for 2024. He was one of 25 legislators selected, and they particularly cited his work as a minority member of the House Housing Committee. So congratulations to our Representative Myers for that, receiving that award or distinction from the League of Minnesota Cities. So there's some updates, we did also, we did not have a city council work session today, and there were, was not any business for the work session today. We did have a, Councilmember Dibbick and I participated in a fire advisory board meeting instead, as well, as well as Administrator Weskey. And other than that, I think I've summarized all the events for the last couple of weeks here. So with that, we'll move on to item four, which is to approve tonight's agenda. And as part of that, I would, I would move to have item on our, item taken off our consent agenda and move to the regular business, and that would be item 5H, removed from the consent agenda, and move to regular business as a new item 7C. So I'll make a motion to make that change this evening.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, and then that brings us to the consent agenda, items A through G on the consent agenda this evening. And just a couple of items to highlight there would be the, really the retirement of firefighter Eric Palmer. He has served 13 years with the Long Lake Fire Department. We very much appreciate Eric's service to, to our community. My understanding is that he is going to instead be joining the Mound Fire Department and, and lives down in, in the Station Two area. And when faced with predicament that, that Station Two might be in here in a little over a year, whether or not he wants to work for the Orno Fire Department or a different fire department, he's chosen to go work for Mound Fire Department. That's the second really good member of our department we've lost in that exact same scenario. So, we appreciate firefighter Eric Palmer and his service to our community. And then, but fortunately, he's being replaced by not one, but two firefighters. So as part of this motion, we'll approve the appointment of Simone Warner and Mitchell Newbauer to the position of firefighters for the Long Lake Fire Department. If you wanted to call attention to those two items on the consent agenda, does anyone want to make a motion regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Second that, motion in a second, any further discussion or any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, what, just short summary of what G is, final acceptance of builder improvements for Avavetta Development? What does that mean?
All of the, this is different than the original, we've already accepted the improvements for the JMH, all the site improvements, all the water sewer, street work and everything. The builder improvements are related to everything with the construction of the townhomes. They have been constructed, the fence is up, and all of them have their CO, so this is essentially a closeout of that project.
That's what I thought.
With a maintenance bond to, to remain in place from both parties.
All right, any, so there's a motion in a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item six, open correspondence, open correspondence is an item on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council, and comments should be limited to five minutes or less. Anyone wish to approach for open correspondence this evening?
Great job.
And no submitted open correspondence, correct, staff?
Correct.
Okay, with that then, we'll move on to item seven, regular business, item 7A, approved liquor licenses for LL Oro LLC, Catherine Stevens doing business as Buck's Pub. Jeanette?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant Catherine Stevens, on behalf of LL, well, I'll just call it LL Oro LLC, it's a lot of L's. Made an application quite some time ago, actually, for a liquor license, however, to open a new restaurant Buck's Pub in the, what we refer to as the Liquor Barn Strip Mall at 2067 Westways at a Boulevard. Unfortunately, as part of their construction project, they experienced some very significant plan review delays at the state level when they submitted for all of their, you know, plumbing plan review, and it took months and months to get that back. And happy to report the delay wasn't on our part, because when we received the permits and when that review was done, we've had every permit out the door there rather quickly to, to keep them moving on our side of things. But that was really a big holdup, and it held them back over three months. So they are now anticipating, they were hoping for opening end of September, now looking at mid-October. But to get ready to certify this to the state, we are now looking to go through the formal action here to approve a liquor license for the corporation doing business as Buck's Pub. They did go through the background check process, everything looked great, clean, no remarks. So we're very much looking forward to having another licensee in town. You're also going to see on our next council agenda, we already have an application from a gambling organization looking to establish a premises permit there, so the Orno Hockey Boosters, I believe.
Ah.
Would be utilizing that as a gambling location, subject to premises permit approval. So I, I think we're going to see that in the works as well. However, we wouldn't entertain an application for a premises that hasn't been licensed to become premises yet. So this is a first step to that process.
All right. And this would be a full liquor license, I'm assuming?
Yep, this would be full liquor license and Sunday sales. I do have, I, I don't, I don't want to put it up on the camera because it's very early, but I do have a copy of a draft menu that's in progress, because everybody's been asking what it's going to be. And they are aiming towards more of that, what they would call quality pub fare. So they're going to have a group of appetizers, and then options of premium appetizers. An example of a regular appetizer would be like cheese curd wontons and Hong Kong pork dumplings, and a large Cajun fries. And premium apps would be, for example, Swedish shrimp on toast, tuna poke sliders, chicken wings, and local grilled sausage. They'll have soups, they'll have some wonderful salad options in both full and half, some great dinner options. They actually have fish and duck options on this menu, so that'll be interesting. Variety of sandwiches, and I'm already craving one of them. They have a hot open-faced chicken with a lingonberry jam as a chef's special, which sounds amazing. A duck breast bon me steak sandwich, crispy chicken schnitzel, a seasonal veggie club, double smash burger. They're going to have some great sides options and some options for juniors and seniors. So the menu is in draft form, it's underway. Well, I don't want to put it up on camera and out the notes. Any, if the council has an interest, I'd be happy to share that with you after the meeting. But we're very excited to, pending this evening's vote, begin the process of welcoming them to our community on a more formal basis.
Sounds great, sounds like a tasty menu. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious about, you mentioned that gambling operation for Long Lake, or Orno Hockey Booster Club. Are there, what other such operations are there?
We have the Northwest Area JCs at Carboni's, and we also have the Northwest Tonka Lions at the Red Brewster. And it is one per location in the city, so you could not have one organization running all three, for example.
But you can't have more than one in, in a, any establishment, or could you?
No, it's one per establishment and one organization having an establishment in the city.
What, and?
So we wouldn't have multiple organizations running a gambling operation.
What's Carboni's, like, what do they, it's not pull tabs, what do they do in there?
Northwest Area JCs, I'm not exactly sure their full scope of, but everything that the law allows under that permit, you're going to be doing your E tabs and your pull tabs.
They do bingo there, is that?
That's covered.
It's bingo, okay.
Everything allowed by the license.
The reason I ask is I'm on the Orno Football Association, so I'm wondering if I should be looking for opportunities. But I guess, I guess we missed out on that one, because you could only have one, right?
Yeah, Burches is still open.
Or San Pancho.
Or San Pancho, yep.
All right, I'll have to look into that.
Primos plates and pours.
You do have to have, though, you have to go through the process of licensing a gambling manager and all, there's some educational requirements and stuff that goes along with that, so, yeah. If the football association's looking into that and already has a gambling manager, we only have two left, yeah.
I'll check, I'll check it out. Thinking.
So I can make a motion?
Thanks.
To approve the request, oh, wrong one. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 202435, approving issuance of liquor licenses for LL Oro LLC doing business as Buck's Pub, subject to conditions contained in said resolution.
All right, I'll second that. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to item 7B, approve issuance of a request for proposals, or RFP, for recycling services and city facility refuse collection. Jeanette, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our current recycling contract for city curbside residential recycling is expiring at the end of this year, and it has been quite some time since we've gone out to RFP. Our last RFP exercise was actually at the end of 2011. So it has been a long time since we've entertained proposals from more than one provider to, just to see how that might affect our pricing. And it seems like an exercise that's good to do once in a while, just to put a little competition in there. So, given that it's been such a long time, I think we talked about it as a staff, and there's, there's a couple other reasons that factor into it, but we really felt pretty strongly that this was time to go out to RFP. The draft RFP that we've prepared does a number of things. First of all, since we do have a hard limit in our city code that we only allow three licensed residential haulers in Long Lake to be licensed, because we want to limit some of that truck traffic. Only existing licensed haulers are eligible to apply, I should say, just licensed residential responsible, and we do have a definition of, of responsible hauler. So they do, they do have some standards to meet, and, and if they're able to meet those, they're welcome to submit a bid under this proposal. Part of the trigger was that our refuse costs for all of our city facilities is going up and up. And one of our haulers just mentioned to us that, hey, you know, a lot of times recycling contracts and hauling contracts just roll in the cost of providing refuse services to your city facilities, parks, buildings, et cetera. And we got to thinking about that and thought, hmm, since it's been a long time since we went out to an RFP, this would also maybe be a good time opportunity to see if we can save ourselves a little cost on a monthly basis for our, our own recycling and refuse hauling collection services. One thing that the RFP stipulates, a couple things, there can't be any overage charges. We've had a few of those where the refuse tops just a little bit over the container limit, and the minute it pops that cover a little bit, we get hit with a very expensive overage charge. Under the RFP, they would not be able to do that.
So who does the city use now? I mean, is it different from who's doing, because this is both recycling and for city facilities?
Yep, we currently use waste management for both, actually.
Okay.
And what, what we're seeing in their charges is not unusual for what everyone is seeing in their charges. We, however, have never rolled it in to our recycling contract. We probably could have years ago, it, it quite frankly didn't dawn on us to tie the two together until a refuse hauler recommended. Maybe you should think about that if you go out to RFP, so, that was a recommendation we agreed with. Another thing that's come up is, I know we amended our city code quite some time ago here now to follow up on the county's organics mandate and require that the licensed haulers make organics collection services available to their residents, consistent with the mandate that's come down from the county. Unfortunately, that also has triggered that state mandate, which means that everyone has to pay for organics, whether you participate or not. We're not able to get around that in any way, but one thing that we have discovered is that the haulers haven't necessarily been charging consistently. And I have also been advised by the haulers that, rather than charging their individual Long Lake customers for the service, that if we were executing a contract for a citywide service with them, it would likely bring down that monthly pricing by potentially a couple dollars. So in preparing this RFP, I also added a bid alternate for a citywide organics collection program. I know Orno has that, a number of cities have it. It also is included in score grant reimbursement, of course, it takes the organics collection a step up. And also would kind of prevent, a lot of what I'm hearing out there is that there's a situation with a, a particular hauler where folks are being charged the organic service, but when they're calling for the bins, they're not receiving them in a timely manner, and have gone weeks without receiving their bin. That's a problem for us. If you're paying for the service, you should be able to get the equipment to do that promptly. So it, it, it kind of, it basically puts us in the exact same position with organics as we are with our citywide recycling collection, if we were to go that route. So we, we included it as a bid alternate with the specs in there. Whether or not we go forward with that would, of course, I think, depend upon the outcome of the bids received. If we did receive bids that made that a favorable option, then I will be working immediately on a code amendment to change our city code, to remove the mandate that the haulers provide organics, and to reflect that the city will be requiring, providing the required organics under a city contract versus having all the haulers do it individually. It's, there's been a little bit of an issue in fairness out there in who's charging what, and I think we're looking for all residents to be treated fairly, and the same while working within this mandate that we don't agree with, but we do have to abide by.
So in, in one of the requirements is that the city, that the hauler pricing per resident must be the same, either cart size, no additional charge for additional carts?
Yep, that's kind of going right now.
And I know, would it be cheaper, I mean, if people just have, and I'm, I'm just raising the issue to discuss it, if they didn't have to do that, would the bid come in cheaper if they could do it per?
I'll say no, because that's how it's happening right now. So we have some households that recycle more than others. Some of them have chosen to have two bins, so they have two 64-gallon carts. Some of them have 196-gallon cart. It's funny, because those weren't actually included in our contract, but Waste Management decided to be user-friendly and has offered a few of them out there, so I know that they're out there. And part of the reason I found out they were out there is because one of our old Virginia Avenue residents had one, and we scammed it as soon as we left. So the, the process is already in place that some households recycle more, and of course, then you have recycle turnover. You really can't keep track of, every household gets charged exactly this for exactly this bin. It's the same equipment, it's the same stop, it's a quick arm off the truck. They are already treating it, they're treating it as stops versus carts.
Okay.
And what this does is maintain that practice.
Okay.
So I got, I got, I switched to, I switched haulers about a month ago, maybe two months ago, and, and so far, so good. I haven't had any issues, but I hear there's been some issues with other customers. And then I added organics can, and I've been using that a couple times, I'm still trying to get the hang of that. I'm not totally convinced, I got a lot of, seem to have a little varmints flying around in the, in the can and stuff. Kind of gross, like bugs and things, but that's, that's composting, that's what's supposed to happen, so. But, so on, on, on one Tuesday, I'll have, I have three cans in my, in my driveway, and then on the other Tuesday, I have four cans in my driveway, because I should also mention I added garden waste or yard waste, so I got a yard waste container, so.
I know there are a few households out there that actually have contracted separately with a yard waste pickup, with their garbage hauler, so.
Yeah, mine's with my garbage hauler, yep. And I like that, I've been using that a fair amount, it's good to put, you know, we've had leaves falling down and things like that, so. So my point is, is that I've got four cans out there on, on one Tuesday, and then the other Tuesday, I have three cans. But, you know, that's not going to, nothing's going to change with that. But then what I'm getting at is, we have three haulers in, in the city, and if everybody, if people are doing garbage, they're doing yard waste, and they're doing, they're doing organics, that's three times three equals nine, so that's nine trucks that we have going down our, our city streets.
And I could make an argument, but this would be long game, not short game. This is not something we could tackle in time for this, because the notice you have to give for all of that would be very big. I could make an argument in the future for moving towards a closed system versus an open system. The intent of the open system has always been to allow for competition between haulers so that residents could shop haulers and find advantageous pricing amongst a few licensed haulers. But I, and, and we've actually reduced the number of licensed haulers, it used to be four. With our latest code update, we dropped that down to three and took advantage of an opportunity. That is yet another reason, by the way, why we are not super fans of the county's mandate, because, again, it's another can, it's another thing you have to bring out to the curb. So it's...
But even if it's one hauler, it's still separate trucks, right?
That's the issue of separate trucks.
Right.
And then you throw a recycling truck in that, that's 10 trucks. Like, on, on every other week, there'd be 10 trucks driving down our streets, and then the other week, it's up to nine, or up, yeah, up to nine, so.
Now, I, if we move to a closed hauling system, it might be different trucks, but they would be going, it would be, you know, likely one or two trucks going citywide to do garbage, then one or two trucks going citywide to do recycling. One or two trucks citywide again to, to deal with the organics. So I could make the argument for that in the future, but I know I have kind of bounced it around a little bit with our city attorney in the past, and that is a thing that you really have to provide a lot of notification on to your haulers. It is a change that can be difficult and time-consuming to make. I can make the argument for making it because of the wear and tear to our streets. And if for no other reason than to try to achieve a different method of advantageous pricing.
Yeah, I don't think we'll ever get there for, I don't think we'll ever get there for, for garbage, but at least for the, the compost, I think that would be nice to have a single hauler for that, like we do for recycling, so at least there's not...
That's kind of what I'm hoping for. I can't believe I'm going to say it, because we just went through all that work to amend the code to do this, but I think the experience we've gained out of it is that, and what the haulers are communicating is that they might be able to offer better pricing under a citywide contract situation.
Sure.
And if that means that, you know, then we have one vendor providing recycling and organic service. Yeah, it might, it might be less trucks, it would be one provider I'd be working with, it's...
Do all of the, I've never looked at my bill, but do all of the garbage haulers, do all of them put an automatic charge for?
They are required to, under state law and Hennepin County law.
Oh, okay, so even if you don't use it?
Correct.
Okay.
So maybe you'll use it, the concept is you might as well use it, but...
It is unique to Hennepin County, it is very frustrating as cities and... Oh, and, and not just you, but I will tell you, I get every customer service complaint. I have had meetings where people have been yelling at Hennepin County. And there's, we didn't, you know, this is not a vote we passed, this was an action by the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners.
If you want, if anyone wants to come up and say something, it's an official public hearing, but you would need to approach the mic and you got a comment to make, sure.
Anita Seacord, 114 Brown Road. So how big is your recycle bin for compost?
It's, it's smaller, I don't, I don't know how many gallons, but it's small, pretty small, yeah, kind of like that.
Because really, you know, it depends upon per family, how much you, you compost. I'm a one, you know, I'm a single-family home, I'm just one person. I'm not going to do like, if you have, you know, five in a household, you know, so it's, it's not, it doesn't make sense. And no, let's not go to one hauler. I like to have my choices.
I've heard feedback in both directions, yes.
I'm just saying. I like my choices.
You had said that you...
To be able to monitor my money versus what the stinking county's doing and others.
You said that some people were dis, had, let's say, were less than satisfied with some of the haulers, and sometimes having, when you are less than satisfied, maybe customer service and things like that. I think it's nice to have multiple choices, because if you get frustrated with one hauler, you can choose and select another hauler.
And I, I have heard both either way, and I, I can make arguments in both directions. I am happy work, I am happy working with the system the way it is. It could be a conversation for another day, but at a minimum, I feel strongly that going out for bid for a citywide organics contract as a bid alternate, despite the fact that it would mean an immediate code update, is, is a good idea. And we'll see what they return for what their organics program would be, and what their pricing would be. Because if I can get that down from $7.50 a month to $4 a month, well, I'm still saving you $3.50 a month, so.
Particularly when the most, a lot of people may not be using it.
Right, but they're, yeah, they're paying for it, right, and not everybody's going to, and not everybody would need a can, right? Like, if you, let's say we did have one...
You can choose to pay for it and not participate, absolutely. Yep, this is not, the mandate is the charge. The mandate is that it is made available to everyone, whether we like it or not. The mandate is not that you have to participate.
Sure.
Anita's back again. So Jeanette, so can you do like, the, the yellow can that we got now, and then that hauler does the compost too? Just a thought, you know, and then that is all under one? Just a thought, you know, and then that is all under one versus the regular garbage pickup.
Here is focusing on curbside recycling collection with a bid alternate for curbside organics collection.
Right.
So whoever's providing your garbage and organics right now would no longer be providing your organics, because that would be under our contract. So you'd see the charge from us on your utility bill, and you'd see it come off your garbage bill.
Okay.
And the same vendor that would provide the recycling service would provide the organics recycling service. It would be one vendor that provided both of those.
Cause that, that would make sense, putting the two recyclers and the compost together.
We, we agree with that.
That's, yeah, thank you.
That charge that goes on the bill, who gets that? Hennepin County, or does the city share in any of that?
No, it's not, we're not involved, it is.
It goes to the hauler?
Yes, exactly, which.
So it's mandated, they mandate price fixing?
State law requires that anyone who recycles is, and again, this is a little outside of the RFP, but um state law requires that anyone who recycles cannot be charged more than someone who doesn't recycle. And the legal interpretation of that is that um organics is considered a form of recycling. So your, just like your curbside single sort program, um organics is essentially the same, meaning everyone pays for it, whether you participate or not. That fee goes to the haulers right now. If we were to take this on as a city contract, if the bids were to come in favorable and we do the code update, then we collect that on the utility bills, and then we pay it to the provider. Just as we do right now with your single sort recycling. Correct, cause that is the state law.
So is that the reason why you can have?
Our fee would be based upon the contract amount.
I get, but the, so two hu- two garbage recycling cans? Yeah, you can't, you can't be charged more than one person has one? Is it the same rationale? Like, um you said the same pri-
Right, right now, it's, they're stopping to pick up your recycling, whether it's one cart or two, they just drop an arm down. They're not manually doing it anymore, so that's why for, for literally since twenty twelve and before, they don't charge extra for extra carts. It's just one flat fee per residential unit.
I was just wondering what the rationale was, but tha- that's the rationale.
It's the drop down the arm, it's the same stop.
Um recycling question, has it ever come up in conversation regarding cardboard boxes? So I know uh in Plymouth, for example, we use our yard waste site, their yard waste site, which is great. And then at that site, at their Public Works facility, they also have a um cardboard box drop-off dumpsters that residents of Plymouth can use, because as, as we know, we all get lots of cardboard boxes, you get deliveries for the, put the really big boxes in there. And um, you know, I think that'd be nice to have something like that at like a Public Works, but I, I think there's some drawbacks too. I'll agree, I'll agree that, to that, uh as far as maybe you know, probably have to have a camera there or something to monitor some of that. But just curious if, if the haulers, if they've ever suggested that or anything like that.
No, they have not. Uh they're willing to take as much cardboard as anybody drops, as long as it's in the three by three bundles. That's the only thing they ask, so.
Right, it's a lot of work to do that, so.
So the, you're supposed to be in bundles, or can it just be in the recycle bin?
Um it, it can be actually, yeah. It, what it can't be is just, is these giant six by nine boxes out at the curb, but yes, people do put boxes in their recycling and it is not a problem, but if you're putting out a stack of cardboard that doesn't fit, basically anything that doesn't fit in your cart, if it does, if the cardboard doesn't fit in your cart, then it needs to be tied in bundles and broken down into three by three.
You may wanna do a, a drive-by visit of your, your recycling center in Hennepin County, cause it's really not a recycling center. It goes to the same place, they just charge you differently. So you may be feeling like you're doing a good job.
That is a whole other subject.
But I'm just saying, so just think about that.
And it is one I would be very careful about.
Truth hurts.
Yeah, I don't, that's, I've spent, since like half my life cutting up cardboard boxes, you know, fitting that can, so I was just trying to figure this out. And Plymouth residents have figured it out, but I do, it does look like a mess too sometimes. You can, they're supposed to fold them flat and people just chuck the whole box in there.
I suspect that if we made that suggestion to Sean anytime soon, he'd be like, I don't need my staff cleaning up after people's cardboard.
Right, right.
Now that said, there is the possibility under the language of this RFP, which basically says the city can designate more, you know, refuse and recycling at its own facilities. Um that we might have the opportunity to do that at no charge per the terms of this RFP.
Sure.
So um this RFP does not rule out that option.
Okay.
But uh.
Consider it on the road or something, then?
It could be.
So could you, I, I, I know we beat this horse to death. But so you, you're talking about a city, the city collecting it, and then the city picking it up under this, having, somebody pick it up under the contract.
Well, the city wouldn't pick it up, are you talking about cardboard boxes?
Yeah, cardboard boxes, do you drop it off?
Yeah, you have to drop, like, under my concept, you'd have to drop it off at.
At a dumpster that is collected.
Yeah, the, we, the homeowner would have to do the work, but at least you're not spending, you know, your Monday night. Like at my house, flattening all these cardboard boxes from your family members who've ordered, you know, eighteen Amazon deliveries in the last, you know, week. All right, any other questions from, on this one?
And just to make really clear, this is just about issuing the RFP, getting it out to the providers. This is not taking action on a contract tonight. This is just releasing the RFP, and we will see what comes back for our review.
What's the deadline? Oh, no, the, for the RFP.
I have it listed in here as September sixth.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the request for proposals for recycling services and city facility refuse collection as presented, and to authorize the release of the RFP effective August eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. All right, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thanks for your work on that, Jeanette.
And although he's not here, thanks to our city attorney for reviewing this thoroughly for me and. So.
All right, great.
I must not have messed it up too badly. There weren't a ton of red lines, so that's a good sign.
Always a good sign, yes. All right, the new seven C, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, approving the participation of the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority in an affordable housing project with homes within reach. And Scott, I think you're gonna give us an overview of this, please.
Sure, uh thanks, Mayor. So the Hennepin County Housing and Throw, uh Redevelopment Authority has approved a homeownership assistance program loan for the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. Um they're doing business as homes within reach, and it's contingent upon Long Lake City Council's consent to parti- have the, the group participate in the project. And so what this, what this project is, is that the land trust will purchase a home inside uh the city of Long Lake city limits. And then they'll find a qualified individual that will essentially just purchase the home part of it, and they'll have a ninety-nine cent lease on the land. Um the land will have, um agreement will transfer all rights to it, so they can do essentially what they can do with a piece of land that you can currently do in the city of Long Lake. And what it does is it reduces off the, the burn of the land, of the sale price, and brings it down to a more of affordable, manageable dollar amount on a, a monthly basis. So you have your thirty-year mortgage like you would if you would go to any other bank um that you would qualify for. And then at any time that they wanna sell, there's a formula that is broken down um based on, you know, based on their formula essentially is what equity, equity do they have out of the house if they do sell? And it does have to qualify, and when it does sell, it has to qualify back into somebody else that wouldn't meet the criteria for the program. And so essentially, they believe this ninety-nine year lease has a, a three or so housing turnover cycle. So um even if at certain, certain point they sell it to their children, their children still qualify for it. All the things are transferred, all the land leases transferred, and all the rights of the land are transferred. So it's just a way to get somebody into ownership. They have to own it, they have to have a mortgage on it, they have to pay taxes, they have to do everything else related to homeownership.
They pay taxes on the entirety, not the home value.
So the home value would be taxed, the land value and the trust might be a little bit different, just due to the classification of it being more on over land lease, I believe, instead of being, let's say, you and I own the land.
So what happens when they default on their taxes? You know, it kinda like uh.
So the land trust is the responsible financial fiduciary of that, so if they foreclose or whatever like that, the land trust is the responsible party.
So they come in and, so there was a Supreme Court decision recently, like within the last two thousand twenty-three, and kind of that's why I thought of this. Um Hennepin County kinda lost at the Supreme Court. They were very aggressive, in my opinion. Um basically, they foreclosed on a property. Uh they, there was a windfall of forty thousand dollars on the property. Uh the person owned fifteen thousand dollars in back taxes. Um and Hennepin County kept it all. And basically, they lost, because the Supreme Court said you couldn't do that, it was unconstitutional. And the reason why I bring it up is if the, the homeowner doesn't pay the taxes, and it goes into foreclosure, Hennepin County takes over the property, who gets the money?
It isn't the county, though, that, the county is a funding source for the program?
Right, but who get, all of these things are great. They, basically, it's a revenue stream into perpetuity for this nonprofit.
Correct.
Because i- at, at no point will they ever own the land, it's always separate. So what happens when this company, nonprofit, goes out of business? What happens if they default, if the homeowner defaults on their taxes and the property seized? Who gets what?
So that'd be Hennepin County's problem.
No, what I'm worried about is.
So Hennepin County's gonna be the first response, if the tax is default, Hennepin County's gonna put you on the list, and they're gonna go through you if like anybody else.
They'll take, so they'll take it, but the nonprofit, who gets the money? At one point, the Hennepin County can't keep all the money, they can only keep what's owed to Hennepin County. But who gets the property? Who, how do you parse it? Who gets what?
Wouldn't Long Lake get their taxes too out of that?
Right, well, it, it, but who gets the homeowner? You, you have a, you have a, a piece of property that has two different owners. You've got the land owner, and then you've got the homeowner. It like, you just, it's basically a rental re- agreement, a hybrid rental agreement. You don't own, you own the house, you own the structure, which kind of like, in my opinion, you have this, this um arrangement in the city. Why would some, a homeowner plant flowers on their front yard if they don't own their front yard? They don't own it. They don't take it with them. They pay a lease on it. So who's gonna do improvements? The house? There's severe, why put in a new kitchen? They don't get the equity out of that kitchen.
Not a hundred percent.
They get thirty-five percent of the equity or something. So why would you do any improvements on the property if you're not getting the equity out?
Okay, so.
One of the things I'm also worried about is why are we endorsing this? I understand, why do we need our approval to get a loan? Are we kind of making?
Yeah, Hennepin County requires it. I asked the same question. I've, I've, I've asked him three times. I, Hennepin County came back, says this needs to be, has a resolution. I asked the company, like, why does it matter, like, that they've always wanted a resolution? That's my, that's, that's all I ever get is because they need a resolution from the council.
Legally, they don't, like, they can go and buy a piece of property. And I look at their financials, and they've got grants of three million dollars. They basically buy the house and sell it to the, the new owner at cost, right?
At home, home value.
At home value, but they, and then it's not clear to me that in the equity, suppose they pay down the mortgage. Do they get that appreciation at least? And what I'm saying is, i- it seems like, are we endorsing something that I wouldn't feel comfortable endorsing otherwise? Because one of the other things, two things struck me about this, that kind of, kinda raised some questions in my mind. It says back here that after selecting a home, you'll meet with an attorney to review the ground lease. Whose attorney are they meeting with? The nonprofits or their own attorney?
May I just add a few comments there, cause that, I know that, that was a lot, and there's one or two things we might be able to address initially. First of all, I think it's important to say, I think we're, we're aware that this nonprofit can buy houses, I think, without um, without the cities. They would be doing it on their own, but they won't be eligible for Hennepin County funding for the, for the purchases they make in Long Lake. They can do it on their own, they already have. We do have one in town. Um so one thing you had mentioned about what happens if, you know, they violate the terms of the ground lease. And the ground lease actually is fairly extensive, in, in some ways, it would, it would almost serve, and I'm not advocating in any direction or another, I'm really not, but from a zoning perspective and a code enforcement perspective, the ground lease actually binds them to adhere to all provisions of local and state law in their use of the grounds. So if they have junk problems out there and we have code enforcement problems, well, they actually wanna be notified because they're in violation of their ground lease. Um but one, one thing I noticed in this packet, I had sent out an email previously with some supplemental information that we'd received from them, and just reviewing a couple of terms from their contract. One of the things that says is, let's see here, um if there is an event of default, the West Hennepin. Land Trust.
Land.
Affordable Housing Land Trust, it's a big mouthful, may terminate the ground lease and initiate summary proceedings against the homeowner. They can enter and repossess the land, may remove the homeowner, and those claiming through the homeowner may remove its or their property without guilt of trespass, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Seems to me pretty heavy-handed.
It goes back to the land trust, not.
Which is like an interesting thing, the land trust. The name sort of sounds, it's somehow government-related.
They are trusting in the property, that's the thing to note.
They, right, but do we wanna endorse this? I'd, I would.
We don't have to.
This looks somewhat.
You said they're doing it already, though.
Right, so that's.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Say the ten thousand foot view of this is, they're trying to get a grant from Hennepin County, and you're supporting them getting a grant. If you don't care about them getting a grant.
Three million dollars in money.
Moving forward with this process anyways.
Anyway, right?
Yeah, correct.
And they can buy a property and rent it if they wanted to? I don't know why they don't just do that.
No, they can't rent them. Um.
Why?
Well.
The program will still stay the same.
The program is focused on ownership.
Buy a property and rent it to anybody I want, right?
I think, I think like if you're, you're, you wanna run the John D. Beck program that does this, you could buy a property.
And do it.
You could say, you know, you have, whatever the example is, four hundred thousand dollar property, you can say two hundred is the house. You then make your own restrictions on, on the land per your decision, and then that's restricted for ninety-nine years, whatever. And the council doesn't have any.
Yeah.
I did a little research into land trusts earlier today, just to try to wrap my brain around some of this. And the way a community land trust works is there has to be, I think, some sort of a ground lease and an ownership component. I don't know that a rental is even an option.
Why, but why?
Yeah.
Why? What stops anybody from buying a property and renting it to somebody?
It may be a unique function of a trust, which is.
Might have a different name.
Yep. This is a legal entity.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, anybody can buy a property in Long Lake, and just, if they wanna rent it to somebody, there's nothing that says it can't, right? There are rental properties in Long Lake.
The way a land trust is established under state law, I don't know if it functions the same way.
Okay, maybe land trust.
And there, and I think the only difference between that is, are you going to buy a house at this much and only charge this much and take the loss? Or are you gonna spread your land loss, your land lease over time and, and, and have?
But they're not giving anybody a discount on the property, and it was kinda interesting, the grants, contributions and other revenue, three point three million dollars. What do they do with that? And then they got a revenue stream from all the, the leases. But basically, if you look in the, the chart, as you said, they get a two hundred thousand dollar home, and they charge the, the client two hundred thousand.
No, well, I mean, all they're doing is they're buying a property and then s- pseudo-selling part of the property that they live in. And they don't own the land.
But they have all the rights on land.
Financing that property, a piece of the property, they're giving it to somebody else.
A lender.
Is the lender gonna uh put a mortgage on just a house?
I, that's what I wondered, that's what I wondered.
They do have to qualify for a conventional mortgage, yes.
What's that?
They do have to qualify for a conventional mortgage through a Minnesota lender, yes.
But will a lender do that? I, I, I'm surprised that a lender would do that.
They are in a number of cities, it looks like, from what we can see from the materials. Now, again, there is, Scott is absolutely correct, this is nothing more of, more than a do you support funding for their operations in Long Lake?
To get, to get a grant.
For Hennepin County grant funds.
These kinda programs can exist regardless of what we say.
Yeah.
If we approve this, it allows this particular group to get a grant from Hennepin County. That's really the different.
They're, they're just a different way of subsidizing their profit margin.
Yeah. Exactly.
I mean, the mechanics of this seem very complicated, cause you know, it says you have to sell to the next person, has to be, meet the same criteria, okay? Well, what do you sell? That, that house that was four hundred thousand, that was two hundred plus two hundred.
But now it's worth. Now it's worth eight hundred.
It's worth eight hundred, well, is that two hundred land, is that?
Yeah.
Well, the land. That's gonna go up faster than.
Yeah, and they don't get, and that.
Right? The, the market says.
And they get the land, and they get the revenue stream from the land.
You know, the mechanics of this.
Here's the one bit of good news in either direction. In either direction, apparently, as part of their regular program requirements under their own guidelines, they scope private sewer lines and make repairs as needed before allowing, um before allowing a purchase, so they make some basic like energy inefficiency and a little bit of rehab into the homes and partic- one of the. And partic- one of the particular ones is, uh, scoping those, exactly, scoping those private service lines. But they're gonna do that with or without county funding for a house they buy in Long Lake, so.
Well, and I look at this, it's like, okay, you're ninety, I mean, this, I think this works with the formula, but you're ninety-eight years into this. And then you, you, you have one year left in that land lease. What happens in the ninety-ninth year, or ninety-ninth year plus one day?
I think it's into perpetu- perpetuity because they'll renew it.
Too close? Yeah, I'm, I'm too far away.
So the owner's appreciation is thirty-five percent. So if you, if it went up to eight hundred thousand, you'd get thirty-five percent and the nonprofit would get the rest, I assume.
On the, on the resale, on the resale.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And then they, they'd sell it to somebody else for two hundred and eleven or something?
I, I mean, I, I look at this and it's-
Or, or plus thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, two hundred plus thirty-five percent is the new dollar amount, so then-
Yeah.
It appears to me a lot, there's, there's a lot of complexity in that, but that's kind of outside the scope of-
Right.
I mean, it's not our issue to say, like, that this is, uh, but what I don't want to do is endorse this and get money. And it seems like they do have a lot of donors. They have three point three million dollars. And as an anecdote, I just kind of did some research on this company and I guess they were in, um, conciliation court for like leaving some sort of rental thing a mess. I think it was resolved out of, but it's just interesting.
Yeah, and, and that's one hundred percent to the council.
Yeah, we're not advocating that way.
I asked, we asked so many questions-
Really?
Over six week period.
I sure did.
And the only reason I did it in, in all realities because I kept getting phone calls. So they, so I'm like, all right, well, I called Hennepin County, they said they need a resolution. I talked to them, they said they have a resolution. I'm like, okay, I mean, is it worth a grant? I mean, we have no responsibility. I mean, it literally says a resolution, but, but what does that really mean? So-
Yeah, it looks like we're endorsing it. Go ahead.
What does the, thanks, what does the grant go for then? Is it specific to Long Lake properties or is it just for their general kind of rep? For the program in general?
Yeah, for the program in general, yeah.
Do we have any Habitat for Humanity?
Actually, I went to Hennepin County's website to make sure that this was an organization. I just did that today. That actually was listed on the county website. And it is the West Hennepin Mouthful.
Yeah.
But directly above it is also a Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. So they are both listed on the county's website for affordable housing funded programs.
But does Habitat, and I don't know the answer to this, I assume, you get the whole shebang, right? You get the house, you get the land.
Garbage can, recycling cans.
Organics if you want it.
And I actually just found this statute on the land trust and it does talk a lot about here, ground leases and mortgages. And it's very complex, but I'm happy to forward the statute to anyone who'd like to see it just for their own reference.
To understand the legislative history on that one.
I'll pass it on just for everyone's interest, uh, outside of action this evening.
So, I mean, overall, like, I mean, uh, I compare this to rental, rental homes. You guys probably, because many inquiries, as I do, I've talked to staff about, you know, we get, we get some inquiries or some complaints about rental homes in Long Lake and the renters and not taking care of their properties, not bringing their garbage cans, things like this. And, you know, overall, I would have less concern about this situation because at least they do have some ownership in the land and-
Not the land, the house.
Think of the house, yes, in the property in general.
No improvements.
Right. So, you know, it's not, to me, it's, it, um, it makes me less nervous than some of our rental situations where we get accusations of, you know, people not taking care of their properties and everything. But if there's concerns, we could, we could certainly table it. I mean, we could also, um, have them here, I'd imagine, if we wanted to.
And one person you could reach out to is one of the board of directors in two thousand twenty-two was the mayor of Minnetaka.
Oh, interesting.
Really?
Yes.
Why didn't we get an updated report? Why is it, it's twenty-twenty?
Twenty-two, yeah, I'm not, this is what it was sent to me.
You'd think they would have something current.
I also tried to look in the business record, like, the, when they were incorporated, I wanted to see kind of that. And they were, original filing was in oh-one. So what else have they done?
They mentioned that they've been part of something for twenty years when they called me, but-
Well, they said they have a hundred and eighty-six homes. Yeah. Since twenty-twenty-two, they did.
Twenty-four years, though?
So it does look like, so if you look at their financial statement, it does say loans for four point one million dollars. I'm assuming they finance those loans themselves of those homes.
That's what I was wondering, if they actually are the loan-
As long as you can qualify for a loan, they'll get you a loan.
I think the land trust statute might permit that from what I just quick scanned. I didn't in-depth read, but-
So that's another revenue stream for them in addition to the property sales leases. And I'm just thinking for, um, I'm just thinking out loud, uh, it seems like they've got lots of conflicts of interest here. That's my, why you need to be-
Or siloed, they're pretty siloed.
They are siloed?
They're, they're pretty siloed, so they, they take the profit, they take the margin, they take the interest, they take the grant.
Yeah, yeah, because they, the grants are, right now, in two, twenty-twenty-two, were three point three million.
It says the leaseholder or homeowner pays property tax on both the home and the land. So is, is the, uh, the tax the same whether it's in this-
It is possible that that was a misspeak on my part when I was sending emailed information.
This, this was in their, their report.
Okay. One of the things we don't know, I, I had also done a little bit of looking into Department of Revenue. I was not bored. And I, uh-
To doing that.
Oh, no problem. I, I'm not sure on the outcome of the bill, but I was able to find something about it. Something to the effect of community land trust properties, yeah, being taxed the same as a residential homestead under the one A classification. But in a couple of years, there may be a new tax classification in effect for those properties. And I'm not clear on all the details, so I can't ascertain the actual tax outcome. Um, but there may be some tax law that may affect that in the future. And they wouldn't be taxed quite the same as the residential homestead. And I do just, you know, again, want to mention, they can buy homes without Hennepin County funding. In Long Lake, you're not required to do this. If you don't, if you aren't actually interested in a presentation from them and you're just not interested in it, no harm, no foul. They may not like it, but it's a decision for our council, so.
How do we get Habitat to kind of work in our community?
Well, they mostly do buil- built, build construction, right? Like, there's new construction.
And we don't have any vacant lots, so.
We might have some tear downs.
All right, what are, what are thoughts, people? Are you guys interested in having a, a presentation?
I think you know where I stand. I, you know, I, I, I just, it seems, it's almost like a rental. Because you are, it, it, there's no motivation for the homeowner if they understand that they don't own the land and, and they really are limited in how much they should put into the house and maintain it because they're, they're, what they're gonna get back is minimal. And it seems somewhat, in my opinion, not understanding completely all of it. It seems like this is a well-financed machine where if, if truly what John said, is they're probably providing the mortgages, because where would you get a traditional mortgage not owning the land and then they're kind of-
Contract at that point.
Yeah.
And, and there is an asset behind it that you can collect on. I, I mean, I, I'd like to get a presentation personally on these guys if we were able to, but I don't know if other people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm up for that. You know, maybe it would help answer a lot of our questions or concerns and maybe we're overthinking some of the stuff, who knows, but, okay? All right, well, um-
You can motion to table if you want me to try getting them at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of, you know, we're not approving it at this point.
Or future meeting in general, yeah.
Right, right. Yes.
I need a C cord, long one-one-four, Brown Road North, Long Lake. Okay. If you're trying to get people into affordable housing or for them to be able to purchase a home, let them purchase a home, let's help them in other ways than giving them a house that they can't take tho-, you know, they can't take it with them. It's, it's like a, a, the concept of a trailer park. You're on leased land with a building, right? At least you can take the trailer house with you, but you can't take the house if you want to move and to have something with you, um, as well as to pass it on. You know, they say, yeah, but if you don't own the land, then you don't own the white picket fence. So what is the American dream is to own your own home and land? Let's, let's work on their finances so they can purchase a home versus coming up with a Jimmy Riggs system of, oh, you can buy the house, but you can't have the land. It doesn't make any sense. I say, don't waste your time, skip the presentation and say no because like they said, they were doing it anyways within the city limits. But I, as a homeowner and a landowner in Long Lake, I would not appreciate some form of trailer park system within my city limits. So, um, and I would feel sorry for these people if they couldn't, you know, do the ultimate American dream of homeownership, making their, their own, making the land their own and then profit afterwards if they do sell the whole thing and have, um, all the money that comes with it. What if they pay the mortgage off? Then they got the building, no land. So it, it doesn't make sense as, as a single parent who bought her own home, got a mortgage and did the work. And I have my house and have a beautiful piece of land, a little piece of heaven, and I love my spot in Long Lake. And I wouldn't sell, so.
And there are other programs, like I'm looking here at, you know, Neighbor Works, Hennepin County HRA Home Buyer Assistance Program.
Yeah, there's all-
Where eligible home buyers in Hennepin County, it says, can receive up to thirty thousand in down payment and closing cost assistance. But there are only limited funds available. It's probably one of those things like with, uh, water bill assistance. You know, periodically, it's refunded and sometimes the funds-
Exactly.
Lower expire.
Thank you, Janette.
There are other, there are other avenues. Um, this is not the only one.
Yeah, and, and it just doesn't make, it sounds like somebody else is gonna make money and that poor homeowner could not, in some shape, form or fashion, would lose his shirt. And just like the old housing crisis last time, you know, people went bankrupt and lost everything. That's what I see in this mess. I don't see it fair. Um, and then when you earn your house, it feels better because you earned it. You, you worked hard, you had some help, but you, it's yours. It's the whole thing, not just part of it. So that, I, I would say skip it and move right along.
This example that they give doesn't look that, that great for the, for the homeowner because when they sell, they, they give an example of the, 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 the house value appreciation, but they only get thirty-five percent of that appreciation. So they're, they're not even getting all of the house appreciated value.
After ten years.
After ten years.
If it's a, that, this is-
No, 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 but-
Yeah, but thirty-five percent, yeah.
It's thirty, so after, whatever the appreciation is on the house alone, they only get thirty-five percent of it.
Well, and I don't know if that, where that thirty-five percent comes from, if that's a ten year or is that, if they did-
That's the formula that they use and that we don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to know.
No, 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 they say-
That's a terrible deal. I agree.
Right, they say, they say the, in this example, the house increased by thirty-two thousand dollars, right? But their formula, their, their rules that they have is that the homeowner only gets then thirty-five percent of that.
Which is a function of what? That's the thing we don't know.
Somebody else gets the rest of it.
Well, it's an example. It says an example, the following chart is an example.
No, but I mean, I think that thirty-five percent is a fixed, that, that is what-
Part of the formula.
Yeah, part of the formula. That's what you get out of it when you leave.
Could even be less. So if you sold in five years, you might only get fifteen percent.
Well, this is the question. And if you went to a thirty-year mortgage, would you get a hundred percent? There's, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The, I would like to see the data presented to us because you've given us one example on certain, you know.
I, I think it's, I think it's thirty-five percent no matter how many years you have, because it's a thirty-five percent of how much it's appreciated. It's, it's really, you know.
My question is, is it a function of the number of years?
Just the house, not the land either, because they don't own the land, but they've been paying rent on it.
I just have a lot of questions. And that's one, why is it thirty-five percent if you went through a thirty-year?
I think it's the formula, that, I think, I think it's a fixed percentage.
I didn't, I talked about the formula.
And this is the other thing, the, the land costs a hundred and seventy thousand. I know they can help more people, but they have three point three million dollars in charity. That's what they got from, in two thousand twenty-two, from charity donations, et cetera. I think they could use a little bit of that to put into-
Here it says, the homeowner receives thirty-five percent based on a formula that is standard among CLTs across the United States, and it's twenty-five to thirty-five percent. So they actually chose the, the higher of the range.
Yeah, well, yeah, the bullet point one there, and that's-
Wait, where are you looking?
Yeah, your bullet point one?
I'm looking, uh, here. At the bottom of the-
Oh, okay, on the page before, the bullet point one, they have, they say twenty-five to thirty-five percent. But, I mean, what, what's the scenario where this house value goes down? I mean, granted, we've only seen our houses go up and our assessments go up.
But it could go down.
Well, and that's, that's the interesting thing there, too, is there's rules against that. Keeping their house.
But regardless, it, even when they show the conventional model, it's like, wow, they're really not getting much out of that resale as they would, uh, you know, from a conventional purchase. But then again, maybe they can't afford the, the conventional path, so I suppose.
I think the real question before council is, are you interested in hearing more or no?
I mean, I'm-
So we're, we're kind of saying no, we're not passing it, so I think we may put it back on them if they feel like they want to, I'm, if they want to come and present to, to us. I think we're kind of, we're kind of, um, you know, guessing some things here. I'm not opposed to hearing more about it.
Do you just want to do a motion to decline at this time and then if they ask why, like, well, you know, they're open to it, just, we just gotta need more information?
Yeah, I'm good with that. All right, so I'll make a motion to decline, um, this resolution at this time.
I'll second that. I didn't think we needed a motion to decline something, but-
When there was a resolution prepared, it's always a good practice to motion to officially deny the resolution.
If there's no motion for it.
Because it has a number and I have to track it and just use your paper trail.
That makes sense. All right, we had a motion and a second to deny this resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thanks, staff, for your work on that. That was for a, something that was on the consent agenda. That took a fair amount of time. All right, so with that, we'll move to other business. Item eight, Councilmember Qualley.
Um, nothing for me.
All right, Councilmember Feldman.
Well, just again, thanks to the Wayzata Police Department and the Fire Department coming out for night out. That was awesome, seeing them out there and, and seeing all, all the neighborhoods. A lot of fun.
Agreed. Yeah, thanks. Councilmember Dyvek.
A few things. I saw this, um, turnback phase one invoice that, from seven years ago that now hit. What, what's up with that?
Um, if you remember,
Seven years ago?
You got the same, you got the, you got the email, you got the same emails I received. So they're like, um, in twenty-seventeen, we went to this agreement, twenty, no, this is twenty-three, so this was twenty-sixteen we went into this agreement. Twenty-seventeen, we made our final payment. We had to go through litigation for easements and that's finally covered, that's finally taken care of now, so now we can do our final invoicing. Um, if you remember-
Did we know that we hadn't paid all of the bill yet or?
Well, they had, so when they, and this will have to go through legal, but when they accepted the project being completed, they had forty-five days to invoice us the net five percent or whatever difference. Because most of the time, you do fifty percent upfront, ninety-five percent at completion, and then you'd have your five percent contingencies. Well, they had forty-five days after completion to give us those contingencies and the rest of that five percent billing. Well, they didn't do that, but if you remember, part of that bill was when we moved the trail from the south side to the north side, which was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, which we paid to that. But then they turned around and tried billing us for design and engineering on top of that, which the hundred and thirty-three should have covered.
Right, that's what that hundred and thirty-three was.
Because we brought SRF to redesign. To redesign and, and then there's going to be construction materials involved with that, plus a twenty thousand dollar, my, my assumption was a twenty-five or a twenty thousand dollar payment that we needed to pay because they had to secure more easements. So I have-
The roll-up was a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Hundred and fifty-three thousand, yeah.
And that was for phase one, which was Willow to Wolf Point.
In twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, and, but part of that is Orno, the north side of Wayzata Boulevard from Willow to Brown is Orno. So is, is, are they having to pay some of that?
I was, I called, um, Orno this afternoon and it didn't get through. I was gonna talk to Adam this afternoon, but before he left, I missed him. So I want to know what they're getting billed for.
Yeah, I want to know if they've got it.
Because I've already received another bill for phase two.
Where's the bill?
Last week.
Where, what are you guys?
Oh, he emailed it today.
Oh, oh, okay.
I just emailed it to YouTube.
No, no, no. Oh, no, no, it's.
I would have been, I just emailed it to YouTube, cause I think you would have, were part of the.
Yeah, I was.
Banning and all that stuff. And then also phase two, they're trying to get another fourteen thousand out of us for phase two that closed in twenty eighteen. So I'm like, I don't know, just because.
Well, there's mainly Orno, so, uh, phase two was, you know, we had a little piece of that, but.
Right, so I think they're gonna get a damn for a dollar amount, but.
It was kinda happening.
I don't know, I wanna get to the bottom of it. I have WSB looking into it and I have John Thames looking into it.
Yeah, I wouldn't be too quick to pay that, but.
I'm not in any hurry to pay it, so.
Okay, more to come then.
Okay. Uh, and then the other thing, we had a fire advisory board meeting today like Charlie said, and I just wanted to say, we went through the operational budget for twenty twenty-five and, uh, we seem to have consensus among the, the members of the fire advisory board. There was some suggest, there was one suggestion from Orno about a change that we agreed to and Scott was going to, um, uh, make that change. So we're hoping that that, um, operational budget then is passed by all the cities. Um, but, uh, but we'll see. And then, um, oh, and then one thing came up, uh, on the capital improvement plan, you know, that's a separate budget that we, we, uh, we also review. I had asked, uh, Scott to put the utility vehicle that is on order that we're getting, uh, now scheduled to get in February of twenty-five. I asked Scott to put that onto the capital improvement plan. It wasn't on his first draft. And, and, and recall, we said, hey, we're gonna buy this thing if Orno is not gonna step in and, and participate under the contract like, like they should. I put, I wanted it back on there because regardless of who's paying for it, it is a capital need. In fact, I went back five or six years, Scott helped me look at old, old capital improvement plans, and this particular truck has been on there as probably the most urgent need for, um, you know, back six years or so. In fact, it was, it was needed and, uh, it, it was on an earlier CIP for two thousand twenty, so we've already kicked it, uh, a can down the road, um, for five years. And, and so they, so Orno kinda questioned about, at the fire advisory board, like, why, why is this on here? You guys have already said you're gonna pay for this. And I said, well, yeah, we said, we, we don't wanna hold up what the firefighters need, we wanna keep, make, you know, give them the equipment that they need, but I'd still like to have it on here, and if you guys would participate, I would be open to it being per, paid for under the terms of the contract, you know, where the three cities paid for it, like they've done, uh, throughout the contract. And so there was some discussion back and forth about whether it should be on there or not. I, I felt, I felt strongly that it should be on there because it identifies the need as, as, you know, it's a fifteen-year plan. And so we show what equipment is needed for the, for Long Lake Fire. It's, it's not, it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't matter who's paying for it, it's, it's a need either way, right? But, um, but there was some discussion about that, that, it sounded like maybe they would be willing to pay for it, uh, under a certain condition, and I said, well, I'll run it by the council. I'm, I, and that, that question was, would we buy it, uh, after the contract was over from them? Because as you know, we have, um, the first right of refusal to, to purchase any equipment at the end of the contract. And I said personally, I think we will, but I'm one oh five, so I can't speak for the council. And, and the reason they've asked for, and this, and this was reasonable when I thought about it, is that they need, their needs assessment, uh, or their plan requires a second utility truck. You know, they're, they're, they're buying the identical truck pretty much, I think, um, now that they're waiting for, but they need a second one. And you know how long these things take to, to, to get when you order? So they don't wanna be left, uh, un, not knowing if we're gonna sell, let them buy it at the end, or if we're gonna keep it, so that they can make plans for their future, you know, fire department needs. And that makes sense to me. So I, I said I'd run it by the council and, um, uh, so the question is, is do we, would we make a commitment now that we would buy it at the end of the contract? And if so, the suggest, or the, the, the message I heard from them is that then maybe they would participate in the joint purchase of it and then we would buy them out at the end. Um, you know, maybe we're at the tail end of this, so, so, so that it doesn't matter to, to the rest of you. I, I think it's, it would be reasonable to, to try to, to do it under the contract and then, and then follow the contract with the disposition of it at the end, but they wanna know if we will buy it or sell it to them at the end. They wanna know now, in other words.
John, have we done any assessment of, like, if we do partner with different, um, uh, entities that we're thinking about, would we need the utility truck or would it be extra? Is this something we'd need anyway? So this is something that we would more than likely buy out so that Orno would order theirs and wait and get it and then, um, we'd buy them out for the purchase price for the one that they are using currently? I mean, if we buy, get ours delivered?
Yeah, we would need it anyway. I mean, that's, we don't have any, all of them are very old, the other trucks are old. So this, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think even if, you know, if we're partnered with Wayzata or, or whatever other arrangement we find, we, it's probably a vehicle, in my opinion, that we would need, um, going forward. So, so I would like to say, hey, yeah, Orno, we'll, we'll buy it at the end of the contract. Um, so now here it is, capital improvement budget, two hundred and forty thousand, and now you can either approve it or not. And if they approve it, then they would pay for, you know, their percentage of it, and we'd pay ours and Medina would pay theirs. And then it would be just like all the other equipment that we have, or most of the other equipment that we have, that's jointly shared among the three cities. And then at the end of the contract, then we'll just, uh, you know, divvy it up as, as per the contract. But this, this truck then would be, uh, we'd, we'd, we would, you know, have been committed to buying it, uh, you know, a decision that we'd make now. And, you know, it's kind of a little.
Verbal promise.
Well, maybe more than verbal promise.
We'd put it in a motion.
Yeah, it would be in a motion so that they would know then that they're not gonna wait for this truck and then they would put, they would put in an order for another truck. So, uh, so.
So a commitment to be purchasing it a year and three months from now?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. And but per the contract, it goes in the CIP, they have a choice to accept it or reject that. If they reject it, then we'd be in a position that we would be buying this vehicle.
We've already said that we will.
Yep.
But, because a, as we did with the command vehicle, as we're doing with the, uh, engine that we're getting from Excelsior, and the only reason those aren't on, weren't on the CIP is they're, the, the CIP is for twenty twenty-five and forward. And this is gonna be delivered in twenty-five. So I thought it was reasonable to put it on there.
But the request to make us commit to purchasing it before the end of the contract.
No, that's an, that's. Not before the end of the contract, at the end of the contract.
So December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we have a commitment to purchase that.
Yeah.
But just to be clear about what some, maybe you were getting to this is, um, we can't, we can't unilaterally approve the CIP, nor can Medina for the contract, that's be a city that's paying, the cities are paying sixty percent or more of the budget. I'm thinking specific about that with the CIP, so.
Yeah, so Orno needs to approve it for the CIP budget to be, you know.
I mean, they haven't approved last year or two CIP, but, or there was indications, at least from one council member, that, um, they might be willing to do that if, if we were to agree to this.
Yeah, I don't know that they would get approval from their full council, but, uh, at least in the fire advisory board meeting, that was presented as a ma, a condition that perhaps they would approve the, uh, capital improvement budget.
So it's, but it is asking both Long Lake and, well, Medina, of course, is, too often the conversation is just Long Lake, Orno, Long Lake, Orno. Medina is a partner in this contract, we need to keep that.
Yeah, and Medina was there at the meeting as well.
But, but it is a request above and beyond what the contract is.
Correct, yes.
And I just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
That is a request.
And, and if, and if we don't, if we weren't willing to make that commitment, then we'll just present the, uh, capital improvement plan as it is. They'll likely reject it and then we'll just buy it and, um.
And I do think you'd want to include Medina in that reimbursement also.
Oh, yeah.
Or just to make sure when maybe, if, if the future motion comes, you'd make sure you've named both cities.
So when it was brought up, I mean, just in, in, I don't know, in an effort to show that, you know, we can work together, um, I, I said I'm willing to make that commitment. I think that we're gonna wanna buy it, but I didn't wanna speak for anybody else, so I said I'd bring it up at the, at the council meeting. And maybe we don't need, you know, we don't need to make that decision now, but I just wanted to.
So when is the approval, like, to know when we need to give them the commitment by motion?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't wait too long because, um.
Cause when you got your preliminary hearing, your preliminary budget approval in September, final in December, so I mean, if they need to bond for it, for reimbursement, whatever, levy for it, for reimbursement, at least they have it on the books.
So maybe the next council meeting then you could bring, you have something on the agenda?
Yeah.
I think that's.
Cause it would defer the cost for us for a little bit if we were gonna buy it anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I, I mean.
Exactly, that's what it would do.
I would just, I would wanna just talk to the fire leadership and get a better, I, I'm guessing that is something that is a good plan, but I would wanna.
Mike, Chief Highland indicated that I think they would need it, so.
Yeah, I suppose I got it too. I mean, remember they brought it to us, I mean, as John said, this has been on the CIP for a number of years. Uh, this has brought to our attention la, last year is our counsel from the Fire Department that this was a need that they have and it's a primary, it kind of, it pretty much goes out on, on every call is my understanding. I mean, it's one of the first vehicles off the door, goes all the medicals and things like that, so it gets a lot of use. I think it's a two thousand two or something like that is the one that's replacing, it's just a.
Yeah, U eleven.
How much does it cost? How much is it?
Two hundred and forty thousand.
Oh.
Well, I think that was the, the last test it was. And it was the final build cost.
Yes, it's an estimate.
Well, I mean, uh, that was, that was the quote when we did the ordering, but you know, final build might be a little bit more with, they tend to change a little bit now with the lead times and stuff, so.
All right, gotta, gotta pay what they ask, what they.
So, okay, so we'll bring that up at a future meeting and, but maybe the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we could probably put something together.
Okay.
Can I ask one final question? How did Medina feel about purchasing now?
They, they said that, um, I thought they said they would, they would.
Yeah, they understood why it was on the CIP. And they understood why it was on CIP, CIP, cause it was a large person, purchase amount, it's a need and.
Yeah.
But they're like, our percentage is so low, so I mean.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
They're like, it's, it kind of is what it is. So, I mean, they support it, but at the same time, I do think it would even get more support, like you're saying, if, if the intent is to reimburse them at the end of the contract.
Yeah.
I'm all set, sorry.
Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, there's been some talk about, um, the sub CAD zones within the two that Orno is now serving, uh, that are water in, in particular Forest Lake and North Arm. And, and as we've had discussions about on, on the last few council meetings, um, there was this question about, you know, the expectation of who's covering it and what. And, and now I've learned since our last meeting that, um, that, uh, Mound is, is covering that, those waters and that, well, first of all, it was, it was stated by the Orno mayor and in a letter, and I, and I believe, uh, otherwise, that Long Lake Fire did not want to cover those waters or could not cover those waters. And, and that's absolutely false statement. Um, and that's on record at our fire advisory board meetings, at our council, um, minutes, um, the letters that we've shared with them, and even the Laker Pioneer article. We never said we would not cover those air, those lakes. We said absolutely we would cover those lakes, but we just wanted to have an agreement with them because, um, because this was a, a change in, in what their decision was for, for those CAD zones. So I just wanted to set the record straight on that. And then I'm told that, that it was communicated to Mound, the same message, that Long Lake would not cover those, uh, lake areas. And so therefore that's now why Mound is, is the, uh, designated, um, Fire Department for, for those. So it's unfortunate that, that misinformation was used, uh, you know, to get Mound to, to, to jump on that, when we said all along that we would, we would cover it. We just wanted to know how that was then gonna be handled in terms of the, you know, whether it was within the contract or, or a separate agreement or, or whatever. So it's unfortunate that, that that happened that way. Um, oh, and then the last thing I, I, um, so Long Lake is currently a no wake, uh, and I met with Sean today because I, I took some measurements at the, at the, at the dam where there's a, a reference marker there and Sean and I had some differences. And, and so I met with Sean and everything was fine, but, cause he now has a new reference mark, uh, or measurement at, at the boat launch, um, that they, the surveyors took a, uh, elevation from some fancy GPS system they've got or, or whatever, but, um, so, which is good to know because it's, it's nice to have it there. But I, we're, we're trying to make sure that that agrees with the one that's at the dam that's been, that Marv Werser put up, I think about eleven years ago, so, um, so he and I kinda are working that out, but we're still under a no wake, uh, couple inches high, so hopefully that'll drop in the next few days.
Can I piggyback off what you said, um, a little bit? Uh, I think, um, we said that the area was not in the contract and we wanted to bring it back into the contract? So now I think they've confirmed that we are correct. It is not in the contract and that's why they've contracted with Mound.
They did not contract with Mound.
No, they didn't contract.
Oh, they didn't contract Mound?
It was, yeah, it's just, uh.
Informal arrangement?
Well.
CAD change, it was just a CAD call change.
So Mound was, is, uh, was the second, um.
Kind of backup department.
Yeah, they, they were designated as the, as the backup to, uh, to Long Lake for those areas, um, all, all along, like, so up until now.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, they, Mound was led to believe that Long Lake Fire wouldn't cover those areas and therefore they had to do it. So it was, it wasn't, it was kind of based on misinformation.
Another aspect to that is this conversation, this phone call to Mound occurred on, I believe it was June twenty-eighth, which was not relayed to our own Fire Department leadership until maybe two or three weeks later when we sent, when then we sent another, yeah, we sent the letter back to Orno, uh, asking to clarify this, and then they were, they sent that letter back saying like, never mind, it's been taken care of. Well, it had been taken care of like two weeks before they sent their letter, but our Fire Department was not aware of that, so, you know, as, as neighboring, as partnering or, or neighboring agencies responding, you'd think that our Fire Department would have been notified about that, that, hey, you're no longer gonna be paged to respond to Forest Lake or to North Arm. That was not relayed to us, it was relayed through, uh, essentially a political means or, you know, in a, in a letter or perhaps mentioned at their council meeting, I don't remember which, but I wanna throw that part in there as well, not, uh, not the best communication for these kind of public safety issues.
And as of right now, this is, the backup response to those two lakes and Deering Island is Orno.
No.
Is, are they, they have something else?
So, what, from my understanding is Mound and Orno get called on together right away.
Okay.
Excelsior is second.
They're second, okay.
Yeah, but, um, I, but.
Okay, well, again, we never said we wouldn't cover it, I don't, I don't think it was ever.
No.
It's never attenuated.
They just said it was under the contract, and we said, no, you took it out of the contract.
Yeah, and, and we said we'd cover it, but let's, let's figure out how we work that out.
Put it back into the contract.
We can cover it, we want to cover it, let's put it back in the contract, so the exact opposite of what Mayor Walsh said. And, and then there was a couple week delay. Sorry, just, yeah, professionalism is just unfortunate.
Agreed. Okay, anything else, John? Okay, um, I forgot to mention Scott was at, Scott was at nineteen night last night, so thanks for coming out as our city minister, Scott, and you got to hear from a few residents about, you know, uh.
Water bills?
Turners, their water bills and things like that, yeah, residents said their water bill is a hundred and eighty dollars for the month, and I said, you should call city staff, because there could be, could have.
You set them up.
Right, right, could be a leaky toilet.
Yep.
And that's exactly why we switched, part of the reason why I switched to monthly billing, so that you can notice these things sooner if there is a leaky toilet or something like that, so if nothing else.
We are running a data log on that particular one, yes.
Leaky toilet or a water softener, um.
Just checking to see if there's something running all the time, or if that's really, uh, I think people don't always realize just how much water is used, even when you're not using your irrigation system often, the amount of water that they actually use is probably more than one would anticipate, so.
Or if it goes off in the middle of the night when you're sleeping.
Yeah, I noticed that at three AM the other day, when I was worried about my neighbor's cat in the rainstorm, I opened up my front door, and the entire irrigation system for a townhome development was running.
It, it happens all the time.
Yeah, and then a waste.
Was it pouring rain at that time?
It was, pouring, absolutely pouring rain, and I could hear Mandy screaming in my head.
Yeah, I know you have good software for that, so yeah, please call City Hall if you get unusually large water bill, there could be a problem with your, your water system. Our rates did not increase that high, trust me. All right, so, uh, and then code enforcement, thanks to staff on working with City Wayzata on code enforcement, I was in here on Friday, and, uh, a nice young, uh, community service officer from Wayzata Police stopped in, and he had a couple of addresses on his list that he was going to go visiting for code enforcement issues. I think one was an animal issue, and one was something else, but, uh, regardless, um, we have kind of something we've never had before really, which is, you know, and other than sending letters, uh, to residents or property owners or business owners. Now we actually have sort of boots on the ground code enforcement going on to, to a certain extent at least, so very appreciative of that, as, as I think we all get, you know, feedback from the community about code violation issues. And then, uh, corn days, of course, so don't forget, uh, on Saturday, three days away or so, and, uh, Crossman Needa's house, and, uh, so I'll be there in the parade, and, you know, John's going to be there, and who else? Mike, okay, we got a quorum notice going, and are you working the microphone this year, or?
You know what, I, I'm not able to make it.
Okay, that's where you go to town, so. So, so that'll be fun, looks like good, good forecast, yeah, yeah, so thanks for posting the quorum notice, I'm going to wear my fancy polo shirt with, uh, Long Lake on and stuff, so wear what you want, but that's my, my, uh, uniform for the day, so looking forward to that. Uh, Scott.
I do not have anything.
All right, Jeanette.
Neither do I.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Okay, just one. Next Tuesday, primary election day in Minnesota, be there or be square, polls open seven AM to eight PM, we'll have our usual fabulous team of election judges there working all day, and, uh, looking forward to greeting voters on election day.
Nice, and it's definitely getting me, that's the time of the year.
Jeanette, we have a EDA meeting next time, right?
That is the plan.
And with some things to consider?
That is the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. And so the next meeting's on Tuesday, August twentieth, um, EDA meeting, and then a council meeting, and I will be absent that day and be out of town, so, uh, Councilmember Dywicke will be mayor pro tem that evening.
Will you three, will you two be here?
I'll be here.
Councilmember Joyce will be attending in person at the next meeting, she advised me of that.
Excellent. All right.
So if there's no.
Sit in your chair.
Yeah, why not, just switch the name, switch the name thing, so, yeah, yeah.
I can switch the name tags.
Should. All right, if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent, Harry Nunn, meeting is adjourned at eight oh three PM. Wow, I'm always going to collapse like that.